Okay, it is six o'clock, so we'll call this meeting to order. We'll take a roll call. Mrs. Petrie? Mr. Cruz?
He's absent.
Mr. Schichler?
Yes.
Mrs. Oshie?
Yes.
Mrs. Saharsky?
Yeah.
No, she's on the third one.
Okay. Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
Mr. Stevenson?
Yes.
And Mrs. Welker? Yes. Okay.
She was very hard to hear, so...
All right, I need a motion from the board then to approve the agenda as presented.
I make a motion.
Okay, so I have Angie and Renee. Can you hear me, Renee?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on the agenda? Okay, so we'll take a vote then. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, raise your hand. Okay, vote carries, six zero. There are no sign-ups, correct?
Correct.
There are no visitors? So we'll jump right into new business. We are here to discuss the reentry plan changes. So we'll start with a motion and then we'll have discussion. So I'm looking for a motion to approve the reentry plan adjustment of continuing to operate on a hybrid schedule through the first semester and have the reentry plan evaluated prior to January first.
Understood.
Okay, so I have Beth and Renee. And I will turn this over to Dr. Isaacson to explain, give some of the data and some of the details as to why we're reevaluating again.
All right. As you know, on October fifteenth, we discussed and the decision was made to move to the four-day week to try to bring kids back more. We talked about the impact of the academics weighing that with the health portion of this issue. Since then, about once we hit October twenty-sixth, our data in the district started to really trend in the wrong direction. For probably multiple reasons is the community spread within Jefferson County and locally is much more significant. There was a change in the contact tracing guidelines where the previous requirement for us as we're identifying potential COVID contacts was anyone within six feet for fifteen minutes as a duration. That has changed to be cumulative six feet for fifteen minutes within a twenty-four hour period. Which is a much, that's going to include somebody that's coming into contact, walking away, coming into contact, et cetera. Now, when it comes to pure cases today, I'm actually referencing yesterday, I was pulling it out, was our worst day. As of, I'm going to point, Nurse Woodham, was today worse than yesterday?
No.
Okay. So, to kind of put it in perspective, and I had sent this out in my letters, on the twenty-third of October, which was a forty days of school, we had had ninety-eight cumulative quarantines that included staff and students. And we've been doing-
Say that again, how, ninety-one?
Ninety-eight cumulative.
Since?
From August thirty-first until October twenty-third.
Okay.
So from Monday the twenty-sixth through yesterday, well, I'll just say through today, we are not, we're at ninety-eight, we're at two hundred and sixteen. So it's basically a hundred plus in a ten-day period. The quarantines. On November second, we had zero staff quarantines. And just you can kind of see the growth. On the third, it went to this two, to the fourth, we had four, the fifth, four. Last Friday, we had eight. Monday, that's jumped to fourteen. We are now at seventeen staff quarantine. As far as contacts. Our staff positives on the second, third was zero and zero. And prior to that was, we had one. Then on November fourth, we had one out. November fifth, two. November sixth, three, which was last Friday. And then we are now at eight, as far as positive staff members. The students on the positive, for a point of reference, we had basically one student at any given time throughout the month of October. And then, on October twenty-ninth, it was jumped to two. The thirtieth, two. Then November second, jumped to three. Then the next day, four, eight, seven, and we, when I say five, like a person's coming off of being positive. And yesterday, we were at six, now we're at eleven. So we had five new positive students today. So, when you look at the quarantining, the rate of spread and the spread, we don't believe, it's not necessarily a school spread within the classroom. Obviously, you're wrong, someone, there's potential, but I think the spread, we haven't been able to necessarily attribute to in-school spread. It's outside of school. It's within a home, within an athletic team, outside events. And we're now itching up on fourteen days past Halloween. But, and I kind of thought that may be one of our dangerous points. But really, November, it started on October thirtieth, as far as that growth. So, right now, we're sitting at eighty-four students currently quarantined as a district. That sounds like a lot, but I will also say neighboring districts are much smaller. This is, our seven is going virtual next week. In the letter there, they have crossed the threshold of a hundred cases of students quarantined. Our seven's a much smaller school district. DeSoto is roughly at a hundred and ninety-five students quarantined. So from a quarantining standpoint of our students and spread, the hybrid is helping us out significantly. Our current issue that we have, and this isn't even necessarily a hybrid issue, is because of the community spread, it's impacting our adults in a big way. Not from necessarily getting it at school. It's we have, we're up to seventeen staff members quarantined. We've had a handful, a handful of individuals quarantined due to school-related contact with another employee. Is that be accurate? Less than a hand? All right? More, until like twelve is being quarantined because a spouse has it or a child has it, which is unavoidable. In a house, you can't do that. So we're really trying to communicate with our staff, we got to stay six feet apart. One of the things, when we talk about some of these other districts that are moving virtual, is we're able to withstand as a district, the quarantining of kids. We can still educate, ask. You know, is it more difficult for those kids on quarantine? Absolutely. But with the teachers here, we can make it work. As a district, what we can't make work is when we start losing staff. And we're kind of reaching that point already of trying to find substitutes, et cetera. So that's where we're at today. At this moment is, we are struggling to find substitutes. The request is to stay in the hybrid until the end of the semester. I believe it's definitive that it's the only way that we'll be able to keep a lot of kids in school on that. And I know I kind of, when we had a meeting before, I said I could go both ways. I'm very firm in my belief, looking at the data, we must stay in the hybrid in order to get through this or we're going to end up, I think we'll end up in virtual. And we may anyhow due to the staffing issue.
Because it's not just substitutes or teachers, it's other staff members as well? Where if we talk, if we look at bus drivers or food service or maintenance or any of custodial, those are, I mean, those guys aren't necessarily included in our numbers right now?
Well, they're included in our numbers, it's, that's-
Well, I mean, you're right, but not the substitute numbers as far as-
No, as far as-
Staff in the classroom.
And what we're having to do as far as that is pull from different positions to try to make sure that we're able to make it work, because you have to-
So you're putting an administrator in a classroom to be a substitute teacher?
Potentially, or a counselor, a paraprofessional, or we're robbing Peter to pay Paul and someone's trying to-
So you're filling one hole, but then you're creating and making it work?
In some cases.
I see.
And so, when, how much more? How many more staff members need to be gone before, okay, we can't do this anymore? Because I know the primary building has been, you know, kind of a hole, and I've heard the intermediate is as well. And, you know, doing lots of robbing of people, not having P D teachers, et cetera, et cetera. So how many more staff members? Is there a number? Is there, you know? I guess, what's the prognosis? I-
Sure.
I feel for the administrators who are trying to pull this together into the building.
Well, at one o'clock today, we had a Zoom meeting with all of them and we discussed all of that to the administrator. They said they can make, they want to, they feel like we can make it work, they're-
For how much longer?
Well, I think, I mean, that depends on what happens with, who's impacted. A big piece of that is, and I sent an email out to the staff, is we all have to be mindful of our own responsibility to stay away from each other. I mean, we had some, we cannot have staff being in contact with other staff in the district. That cannot happen. You can't avoid a contact with a spouse. You can't avoid a contact with your child. But I can't, I can avoid being next to Ms. Hildebrand and separating myself in a meeting. And we need to do that. Part of that that will play into this is being mindful of our, if we can avoid absenteeism in other ways. You know what I mean? This is, if I can deflect and not take a personal day on Friday, we're all going to have a role in this, but I also, and I emailed this to the staff. In our board policy, we have a policy that says in our lead requires a forty-eight, may have to give a forty-eight hour notice to take a personal day. We've never done that. That will directly impact morale, but to say, you have to ask permission to take off. But if we're all kind of being mindful, our issue is if we have enough subs to cover, then we're good. And that's going to be an impact, that's going to, there's not a definitive number of people impacted. It's, we're as our subbing issue and what is the coverage issue. And I think the length of which time, if we're going to have to do it for two days, that's reasonable. If it is, we don't have, if we have twenty people that are out for a period of two full weeks, that kind of plays into it too. So, we talked today and to the administrator, they said we feel like we can make it go. We want to continue to, let's get through this week. We do have a significant number of people coming off quarantine next Thursday, Wednesday and Thursday, barring in addition of a whole bunch of staff members right now, but-
Next Thursday?
Next Thursday. So that's-
Over a week from now.
So it'll be four days of school to get through it, because we have the, tomorrow we're off and then Wednesday will be the virtual day. So making it through the four days of school. And again, tomorrow, if we have three or four more staff members impacted, that will change everything. And so, and change the administrator's perspectives. Right now, the primary and the intermediate are getting hit hard, but the high schools and junior high and the elementary haven't been hit as hard. And that may have been flawed, so that brings up the discussion. Do you, if you do close down, do we close down a building? Similar to what other districts have done to the north of us, or do you close the district? When you have the primary is K one-two. So if you shut the primary down, how does that impact the high school when it comes to daycare? Are you gutting your high school for the coverage there? Do we just shut that down? So those are all the discussions that we've had today. What we are doing is moving forward to put plans in place as far as logistical. What are we going to do if our hand is forced, where we have to go, and I have to call it like a snow day, we're going virtual tomorrow, is we got to have the equipment at home, we have to have the ability to feed students, to send out form, we have to have the ability to be able to bring staff in, you know, from our bus drivers and food service. Because that's where, there's so many different layers to this. You have the educational piece. But if we go virtual, I don't know that we just want to say, bus drivers, you don't have a job for two weeks. Because it's hard enough to, or for three weeks or four weeks. Because we're already struggling to find those positions, is they're going to go find another job. But we also have to ensure that we're an employer and making sure that the work is valuable to doing those things. So those things we're putting in place in case the administrators felt like today, again, this was at one o'clock, based on the information that we knew, like, we think we can get through the week. And Dr. Freeman said that as of that moment, all the jobs that didn't fill at the primary, and that is robbing Peter, I mean, that's not all full subs, that's using different positions without having to combine classes as well. Because that's one of the things- Except for the specials, which are a G M or a music class, a larger, a larger room. And not to where we're putting my fifth grade students with Ms. Welker's fifth grade students, because I'm not. So, that's kind of a broad overview of where we're at today.
Or is there any way that you send these staff that have to be quarantined, but they're not ill? I mean, and they're still working from home? To alleviate that substitution some, because they're obviously still doing lesson planning, reps and grading and all that kind of stuff?
The, not, not, if we went all virtual, sure. But the issue is if I'm, if I'm a teacher and I'm quarantined, I still need you to supervise my students. So, yeah.
Well, and then, the point we need to think about too is just because we say we're going to go all virtual, doesn't mean that it's twenty days. It, you know, it could be a short period too, correct?
Yes. Today, when I visited with the administrators, the date I had in mind of just even, if we weren't able to sustain it, looking when people were coming back, because it's more of a staffing issue, was if we're not going to get them back to the nineteenth or twentieth, that's taking us to, essentially, all we have is that Monday, Tuesday, Thanksgiving week. So probably, we're looking at November thirtieth return date. That is what one school district is doing. District to the south of us is going to be off tomorrow through Friday. And then they have, their Monday is their virtual day, and they're coming back Tuesday. So there may be instances like what, virtual may be three days here, four days there, to withstand the staffing issue.
And the purpose of that would be so that we could have enough staff to plug those holes again, you know? So we don't have all those empty spots. But that, because the student cases are a little higher, but they're not.
They're-
And that's, when you look at the website and the numbers that are given, it's the number of cases, but it doesn't address the quarantine. And so, people from the outside, you know, that aren't familiar with education especially, may not really comprehend, okay, there's only nine cases, but look at the number of staff members we have out that aren't identified. And so, I think we kind of need to read through that information just so the public and parents are aware, aware that it's not just positive cases.
And there was a hundred and seventeen students that are quarantined, correct?
No, there is eighty, eighty-four students quarantined currently. A hundred and one individuals, and that includes staff as well. So we currently have seventeen teachers or staff members quarantined as a contact, eight quarantined as a positive, for a total of twenty-five staff members. And then we have eighty-four students quarantined as a contact and eleven positive, for a total of ninety-five. Am I accurate, my numbers on that, Nurse Woodham?
I believe what you said is true, yes.
Out of those quarantined over the course of the year, how many have tested positive?
How many have tested positive aside from-
I mean, the contact quarantines?
Any of the contact quarantines that weren't family-related, like myself?
Yeah, I mean, integral.
Zero? Are we still at zero as far as?
I believe we're still at zero.
We're still at zero on the number of individuals that were-
So these measures are overkill still? The Health Department's measures are still way overkill?
Correct.
Not just the Health Department, the CDC is now-
The CDC, well, but the CDC is, it's the Health Department that's the legal issue.
That's definitive saying, the CDC can say anything they want, but the state, the governor, the Department of Health and Human Services, they're all far more germane to this discussion.
That August seventh mandate that we contact trace and submit those from the Department of Human-
So there's more stringent contact tracing, is that from the Department of Health and Human Services?
The CDC and they-
But I mean, how did this, why is the Jefferson County one, are they just doing that because of the CDC on their own? Or is it like before where the Department of Health and Senior Services is saying, you got to do this? You remember when they sent out that thing, that submarine, the whole-
That is the, that's the guidelines by which the Health Department, that's their expectation, as I understand it. That's the contact tracing piece of that. To answer it specifically, is Ms. Brown be willing to, can I ask Ms. Brown specifically? I mean, she's a, Ms. Brown, would you be willing to, as far as the six-minute piece, where is the guidance that the Health Department is getting that from and that requirement?
We are advised by the H S S to follow the CDC guidance for quarantines, and they did.
H L S?
You were correct, that mandate that came out, that is a direct order from Dr. Williams from the H S S.
Okay, H S S, sorry, I thought you said H L S. Okay, yeah, all right. I still think until non-compliance is on the table, we're going to be chasing our tails. I mean, these guys, we're going to, this surge was going to happen at one point or another. Even if we decided to go, you know, things calm down, we decide to go back to normal again, it's going to happen again. And it seems to be independent of the guidelines they're stressing for us anyway, because this whole time, no matter what, our quarantines have turned up zero. With the less stringent, so. I mean, at some point as a school, we got to decide, are we in that business of education or health care? I mean, the outside thing we can't control, obviously, but inside, it seems like we're doing the job. And the quarantines are what's killing it. Absolutely. And this is just deferring the discussion that we're going to be having later on in this year. I mean, is this going to happen again and again?
But again, it goes to the discussion. I'm not going to ask any of our employees, because it's a misdemeanor to not work. It's different than if John Isaacson doesn't turn my child in. But when we're a public entity, is if Nurse Woodham turns her eye to, doesn't look and see that's within six feet, it's a misdemeanor.
Well, I, what I'm saying is, is board, you know, I'm not saying anything else.
But even a board edict that, I don't, I totally, like, I totally get, but I don't know that the board should edict its employees to break the law. Like, the one thing that's not mandated is the mandate, it's like the board to make a decision, we're not going to-
Funny, because that's far less destructive than education laws. I can't say that in plain air that somebody needs to stand up and be brave.
Be brave for what though?
For what's right for these kids? I mean, this is devastating.
But if we have, we have staff and that aren't here, and we have bus drivers that aren't here, and custodians and cooks, and if we have all these holes, we can't-
Well, you understand what I'm saying is the solution is we stop quarantine.
I don't think that's a decision we can make, I don't think.
Yeah, I don't know how we can do that.
It is, it's being, right now, we may as well be handing the keys over to the Health Department, saying, we can be at school out.
Well, we're not necessarily looking at shutting down today either.
We will be in the future or something, possibly, quite possibly, and we're at the rim right now. And they're, they're-
But we've done that for pertussis, for whooping cough, we've done that for flu we have-
Sure, but they've taken this to a whole new level, especially for something that, how many have been hospitalized of the positive case? I mean, we're looking at something here that we're looking at a less than a quarter of a percentage in terms of infectionary. And we're looking at possibly shutting down the school. You know, at, at some point, you have to say, okay, when it began, they said shutdown, that'll do the trick, we just need to shut that, we went through that horribleness for the sake of, you know, curing this plague. Well, guess what? You know, it's still around. And then it was, well, we need social distancing, and then it was no way, we need contact tracing. Now it's, oh, we need contact tracing on steroids. I mean, you know, what's next? They could kind of even worse on us, force us to go virtual. But at some point, we're going to have to ask ourselves, are we willing to just throw in the towel and let school disappear? Go virtual because of the Health Department?
Well, I don't see that happening at all.
I see it happening day by day right now.
No, I don't see that at all. And I think that the plan that we've used with the hybrid has passed slowed down some of these issues.
But actually, our plan with hybrid hasn't slowed it down. I mean, we've had zero out of the quarantines. Our quarantines haven't been necessary. That's what the data tells us.
But when you look at the numbers in the county, how those are increasing, and those kids are out in the county with their families, and they bring them back to school with people.
But that's, again, that has nothing to do with our measures. That has nothing to do with our measures.
I understand that. But at the same time, we may end up losing other staff members because they don't want to be around all of that.
That's possible, maybe, I don't know.
And then you still won't have school if you don't have enough people to fill all of the necessary positions.
I-
I really think the issue tonight that we need to stick to has to do with going back to and staying on the hybrid until January first and then reevaluate. We have Thanksgiving and Christmas to get through, where spread will increase or will happen. And we want to get through that point and see what, what happens from there.
What's going to happen if we go to normal and then this happens again? I mean, these sorts of things are going to happen again and again and again. It seems seasonal a lot of those.
Maybe.
Are we going to just go hybrid every time it's COVID season? Is that the plan?
No, I don't see that happening. But I do see things- But I do see things changing as far as eventually a vaccine will be in place and people will be taking those.
Well, that may as well, that, that's a very large hypothetical, there's no, no.
Well, I, that's not, we're not here for that tonight either, as far as a vaccine goes. But we could debate those numbers and when it's gonna happen and what it'll do and who'll take it and how it will affect it all. That's for another night. But I would like for us to really stay on target with this entry plan.
On our measures, I would say that our district measures of being in the hybrid, aside from the staff issues of today, are, give us the best chance to not go to an all-virtual and have it. Cause I know is when I look at the cumulative cases, when I said it's went up a hundred in the last ten days. But as a school district, we're now at two hundred and sixteen students plus teachers, individuals who've been quarantined during the school year, is.
But not necessarily in quarantine today.
Not necess, necessarily in quarantine today. Oh, no, that's a total quarantine. At some point, they've been quarantined during this school year. In conversations with, it was about a week and a half ago, having lunch, neighboring district, we went over nine hundred. So that's where.
But that's, those are the quarantine, right?
With over nine hundred people quarantined. And similarly, I don't believe that any of those individuals, aside if it's been a family quarantine, ended up being positive, school-related, even county-wide. So when we talk about, what is Hillsborough's measures versus others? Nothing, we're getting them wrong, but there's seven hundred difference, seven hundred additional people that Hillsborough hasn't called and said, hey, your kid can't come to school for the next quarantine. But then, I understand.
I, I really let's us survive the health bureaucracy, but in terms of, you know, in terms of quarantine, so far. But it's getting worse and worse. They're, they're only going in one direction right now, in more restricted. And I'm just saying, right now, it feels like we're delaying a confrontation that's gonna happen at some point. Or maybe we just don't ever do that and we just let ourselves go all virtual, but, I mean, writing to me is all the whole. I'm trying to be big picture, I'm not trying to be on target on the, on the reentry plan. I'm just saying, at some point, enough has to be enough. So, that's all I wanna say.
Well, and we wanna make sure that kids are here as much as they can be. You know, that's, that's why the last vote, those that voted in favor of it, wanted it to be a four-day week for in-person learning. Cause we, we want our kids to get back to what it is. But if it's, if it's not gonna work, if we can't run the school in that way, how can we, how can we have a four-day? The hybrid was eliminating additional quarantines. And it, it may get worse, but for now, we can still operate in a hybrid. Which I think is what we're supposed to be evaluating this evening. And it was already decided not to go virtual for, at this point, correct? Yes, so we're still at the hybrid, blue and white group, in-person on Monday and Thursday, or Tuesday and Friday, with Wednesday being a virtual day. So learning can still take place, we can still provide an education. So, are there any other questions from anybody else?
Did you guys hear your thing?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm standing there.
Really hard to hear earlier, so I apologize. Um, I'm trying to piece together what John was saying there, cause it was breaking in and out. Like, if I was given pieces of us as a board discarding the quarantine, contact tracing rule, did I hear that right? Or did I mishear that?
Yeah, well, it, that, that pretty much was the gist of what I'm saying is that we're headed that direction, I think, regardless, unless we're going to be pigeonholed possibly by the health department going all virtual in the future.
Um, in my, you know, one thing, one point to make with that, and please bear in mind, it's been a few years. But I thought there was something, I thought we learned this with our board training, again, I may be misspeaking here. I thought there was something where as a board, there, something about making a, making a policy or rule or whatever that flies in the face of the current law, whatever that may be.
Oh, kind of, yeah.
So I, I, again, I, I have to go back and look at my notes from a few years back, but I think we need to be very careful with that, just from that standpoint. If, if I'm thinking correctly. But, you know, I, I think this, you, you are right, and we are kinda being hamstrung by these edicts that are getting stepped out. You know, chafing in for consecutive cumulative is a game changer, unfortunately. You know, I mean, it, you know, like John mentioned earlier, you know, the, the, the food services staff, you know, over three lunch periods, if one of them is positive, they wipe them all out. You know, I mean, that's, that's, and again, you know, yes, and I think we even said this back in August. You know, it's not the death rate that's concerning, it's the fact that we've gotta follow these rules that the DHSS is putting out. And we like them not. Um, and I, and I think, you know, that's, that's where it gets tough, is okay, yeah, we can send them back to work like we discussed, but I, I just, I, I, with what we see now, with what we're seeing now in the primary, they're immediate, we'd be at the virtual for not having staff, not, not even students. Uh, but the staff, then, you know, that, that's kind of what we've been talking about too, is the fact that, you know, K through six, the younger, younger ages, you know, the numbers show that it isn't really affecting as much. But when you start with the teaching staff and our other, you know, teachers, all of our staff members in there, who are at an older age, who may have basic condition of some sort that makes them more susceptible to this, we do need to think about that as well. So I mean, it's, there's, there's no good answer, unfortunately, really, really serious.
Short of outright defiance, there are things we could do as a district that would definitely, I, I mean, the, the, the Department of Health and Human Services, Senior Services, sorry, is, it's a political entity under the government too. Oh, I'm sorry, I, I tried to be a lot, but this is a political entity at the state level too. And, you know, if we just told parents who are unhappy, hey, write them, write your government, I mean, you know, shut down the phone lines if you have to, but talk to them. I mean, we're not encouraging activism or anything like that right now, and that is certainly not very clear in law, as long as we don't get involved in a political issue we're balloting. And, and I, I'm, I'm just, I think there's a lot more, you know, right now, the direction the, the, the district seems to be, keep our heads down and hope it doesn't get blown off by the health department. I feel like we need to stick our heads up just to use the medical.
Well, and to that end, the, if the, the will of the board, it's different, there's outright defiance, we're not following that. But there is also the, and it's a much slower process, but hey.
We're not even starting it right now.
But writing, you know, the board like, hey, this is hurting education, the Hillsborough Board of Education or Districts.
Or is the, the whole Jefferson County District something, but right now, it's like we're in survival mode.
And I can tell you that those discussions have had, have been in superintendent meetings, absolutely, if we've went, expressed those sentiments. I've expressed those personally, is regarding the wearing of mask to keep someone off the quarantine. You know, if you're wearing a mask, why should that not exempt you from the quarantine? Cause it sends, from John Isaacson's perspective, I'll speak for John, to me, it sends a mixed message. If I'm not being protected, why are we, and, and asking, you know, I asked the question in the last meeting, is that a thing as we go through to different health departments where boards of educations are saying, you know what? We're not gonna wear the mask, we'll take the lesser of evils if our kids are gonna be quarantined anyhow. And I could foresee potentially that occurring. Those, I don't know when the restrictions are gonna come up. I had actually hoped that quarantine may go away by Christmas. And it kinda felt like it was headed that way, and then two days or three days after we had our meeting, it literally got tighter. And then subsequently, it's blowing up.
I would like to call a question.
Okay. She wants to call a vote. Are we good with that? So we have.
Please, Speaker.
She.
I'd like to call a question.
I can hear you, Beth, I just can't hear, I don't hear anybody else.
The motion is being called to be voted upon. So we have a motion to approve the reentry plan adjustment to continue operating on a hybrid schedule through the fir, end of the first semester and reevaluate it again prior to January first.
Can I bring up one more point before we vote, please?
Okay.
Um, since we've kind of, you know, things have changed, a lot of dying here lately with this, can we as a board put out a directive for Dr. Isaacson, if he can make a decision?
Yes.
Yeah, decision for.
How we move on this.
Having these.
Every contact with crime, the runners-up, the person who made the pain overnight sometimes.
Well, for virtual, aren't you able to do that?
I can move this.
Pandemic.
I can, yes, I can move this into red, but enclose school and moving into virtual according to the reentry plan.
Without board approval.
Without board approval.
Yes. But I would say.
But that's not what we're doing tonight.
No.
No.
You know, I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, any other questions before we vote?
I just wanna say, I wanna keep our kids in school as much as possible, but at the pace we're going, we don't have the staff here, then we're at a hundred percent virtual. And so if hybrid is the best solution, so if hybrid's the best solution, that at least we can have here two days a week, we really, I'd rather have them here two days a week than zero days a week, right?
Absolutely.
And I'm afraid that if we don't continue in the hybrid role, that they'll be zero days a week. And that's not good for kids. You know, I'd rather have them here two days than zero days.
Okay. So the motion is on the table. All in favor of adjusting the plan so that we stay on a hybrid schedule, raise your hand, please. All opposed? Motion carries, six to one. Sorry, five to one, cause Rob's not here. Can't count apparently.
We adjourn.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn by John, do I have a second?
Second.
Eric? Any discussion or questions? Okay.
Can I get clarity on Director Stevenson's directive to me, as I understand it is? I'll communicate with the board, but if we have, we would have to go virtual to make that call. But also, as I understand, is between now and December or January fifteenth, if something would change as far as contact tracing, the cases go down, do I have the authority to move to try to move forward with a four-day week? To move into that being it's already been approved, if visiting with administrators and teaching staff, would that like to be brought back? I don't foresee it, but also, would the board like to reconvene if we move in that direction as well?
I, I'm fine with you making the call.
So I don't know what the lady said, how they feel. Renee and Beth, how is it, how do you feel on this issue? Of letting John?
Make the call?
Yes.
But if, on both calls, the four-day week is well-asked.
The virtual.
John, do you want that responsibility?
That is my responsibility, that is my responsibility.
I know it is.
And I'm gonna communicate, that's not just.
It's nice to have some people behind you.
No, it should, as, I will, I know that, I do. So, and a team of administrators and teachers and, uh, right now, sitting here today is, I wouldn't be recommending staying in the hybrid till Jan, January fifteenth, if I thought that it would occur. But if we get that pleasant surprise, I don't wanna just, I wanna, if we can get the kids back, we'll do that. Do I foresee it, sitting here at November tenth? No, but if we can, everyone will know beforehand and we'll try to move forward, so.
Okay, motion on the floor then is to adjourn, all in favor, raise your hand. Okay, motion carries. Thank you.